I thought that you could do something to do have a conference. Students would sort of sell that as like.
I'm going back to my mind.
That would be, I think that would be the situation.
Not too far.
But I know it's, I've talked to, actually I talked to Dolly at talking about it.
Oh, so I'll have to interview.
And she, she said that there's like regulations.
Yeah, I will definitely.
Yeah.
There's so many. The air war. That will work in here.
Where's your, where's your phone?
Six two. It's fine. Everything's one line.
Okay. Seven three six two. Okay, got it.
Was here.
Okay.
How are you? How do you wrap it up though?
I'm just texting you. You're way.
So she knows who she is.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we're going to do for life. I don't know. Like he. We're sweating. Yes.
Or how, how many, do you have to get that like monthly or?
Yeah.
Or how, how many, do you have to get that like monthly or?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, I'm not going to walk away. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
And they're mostly students. Basically, you guys are trying to, you're just advocating solar. Is there, do you have any financial background? Just sort of, you sort of like not representing students and advocating solar. Like to power the students.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 to 2024 capital improvement program. On behalf of the school board, I would like to thank you for taking the time this evening to come and talk to us about the CIP. If you have written comments, please give them to one of the clerks seated to my right and please turn off or silence your cell phones. Tonight, we have eighteen speakers. Each speaker is allotted three minutes. The timer will start when you begin to speak and you will be able to see the remaining time on the clock on the lectern. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. If you have not registered to speak tonight but would like an opportunity to address the board, please see one of the clerks to sign up for one of the five extra speaker slots. Your name will be called after the registered speakers. So I will now call on the first three names. When you hear your name, please begin to make your way to the front of the auditorium. Wendy Gao, Catherine Zhang, Ira King. Ms. Gao.
My name is Wendy Gao and I'm a junior from Oakden High School. I stand before you today with a slew of different emotions. Firstly, gratitude and appreciation. I'd like to thank each school board member for taking the time to listen to us. A ragtag group of students joined by our courage to believe in a better world and our resounding trust in authorities to do what is right. Last October, the school board passed a resolution on climate change action and I listened to each of you speak from the third row. I cannot put into words how it felt to sit in the audience and feel heard and acknowledged. So thank you. Thank you for supporting us, our cause and our futures, but most of all, thank you for listening. Two months after you passed the resolution, I sat in front of my laptop and could not feel more helpless as nearly two hundred countries met at the 2018 UN Climate Change Conference to discuss the Paris Climate Agreement. And ultimately, my fate, as well as each of yours and everyone sitting in this room. Despite the fast approaching impending doom that is climate change, politics still managed to set world leaders apart and inhibit ineffective resolutions. That's why I also feel anger and outrage today. My generation is growing up and we're inheriting an unlivable earth because the people that came before us cared solely about doing what is easy and cheap. My lifespan could potentially be cut in half because my government leaders did not act fast or large enough. How wildly unfair is it that we, the common folk, must pay for the sins of politicians and fossil fuel companies? The issue at hand is preserving the earth for this generation and those of the future, the unborn that cannot yet speak for themselves. Today, I speak on behalf of my future as well as theirs because I wish someone had spoken for me before I had a voice. So, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that this group of advocates can influence change and take hold of our futures. I'm hopeful that the school board will adopt renewable energy projects in the capital improvement plan this year by taking advantage of the imminent Fairfax County Power Purchase Agreement contract. I'm hopeful that since the world and the federal government have turned their back on me and my generation, future generations, and even yours, because you will be affected by climate change, that the school board will compensate at the local level. And once again, listen. I'm hopeful that each of you will challenge the status quo and look beyond political challenges. I'm hopeful that you'll find the courage within you to do better and be better than those before you and help create a future that will last. Thank you.
Catherine Zhang.
My name is Catherine and I'm a senior from Oakden High School. I'm here today to advocate for putting solar energy at the forefront of the capital improvement program. For today, I've written a mix of prose, slam poetry and spoken word. Planet Earth is four point five billion years old, mankind about one hundred forty thousand. If you condense the Earth's lifespan in twenty-four hours, then we have been here on this planet for three seconds. Three seconds and look at what we've done. Why, I learned in physics that every action has an equal and opposite reaction and we should not be shocked when we see storms stronger than ever before or more droughts, hurricanes and wildfires than ever before because there's more pollution, more carbon and more trees cut down than ever before, all at a record pace. What a feat. In the next ten to one hundred years, every beloved animal character in every children's book is predicted to go extinct. I believe that we should have a right to eat food that is safe, drink water that is clean, marvel at trees, breathe air free of toxins. These are natural rights indeed. For five schools under power purchase agreement for solar, Arlington County Public Schools will save four million dollars. Middlesex County will pay six point eight cents a kilowatt hour for solar compared to the current nine cents with expected savings of two point five million over twenty-five years. This is solar electricity at a flat rate. I would like to take time to thank FCPS and the school board. Thank you for one hundred thousand tons of CO2 emissions reduced since 2014 and thank you for twenty-one million dollars in energy savings since 2014. Today, we have a means of preventing this devastation. This is a long-term investment for sustainability and for Earth's vitality. Let's wash the era, the world in a new era filled with clean and renewable alternatives. We are but three minutes in a planet called Earth and I ask, with no planet to live in, what is my education worth? But it's up to you because time is of the essence and only together can we make it to the fourth second. Thank you.
Ira Kim, followed by Helen Krieger and Mewa Johnston.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ira Kim and I'm currently a sophomore in Woodson High School. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today in support of enforcing the power purchase agreement while you recognize the issue of the importance of solar panels on our schools. I would also like to thank the awesome facility staff members we have in the FCPS community that are pouring their efforts and determination in evaluating the cost viability of solar panels in these schools. According to the study of the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, the carbon emissions of the average best conserving Americans were more than the double the amount of average of the people living internationally. The U.S. is one of the largest carbon emitters in the world. With about four percent of the world's population is responsible for about a third of the excess carbon dioxide that is harming our planet. Not only is it bad for the ecosystem, it is bad for our health as well. So it is our duty as members in our community to oversee the issues and complications for the sake of the people, which importantly to children and the students. And unfortunately, the community in FCPS is already behind. Other school systems in Virginia, including Richmond City Public Schools, Augusta County Public Schools and Arlington County Public Schools, Middlesex County Public Schools are already putting solar panels on their roofs. So we must address the issue of climate change now, which directly correlates back to our actions as the consequences can cause damages to our planet, our beloved home. The dependent use of fossil fuels in America leads to high levels of air pollution and climate change. Renewable clean energy is imperative and must replace fossil fuels to execute an endeavor for a clean environment. You must set an example for others to follow as the people depend on FCPS, the largest public school system in Virginia. With over one hundred eighty thousand students enrolled and one hundred ninety-eight schools, FCPS serves as the foundation to our education and holds responsibility to keep each and every one of the one hundred eighty thousand aspiring students in a clean and safe environment. As the leading education system in Virginia, I believe that it has the power to influence our community and not only Fairfax County, but the communities in Virginia and the country to follow. So thank you, school board members, for your commitment and dedication to this issue that will not only direct to positive impacts for the success, safety and well-being of my own future, but the future of the students of FCPS, our friends, our family members and our community in Fairfax County. Thank you.
Mewa Johnston, followed by Emma Layton and Susan Garahan.
Excuse me, my name is next to the left.
Helen Krieger.
Good evening, my name is Helen Krieger and I'm a junior at James Madison High School in Vienna. Today, I will be talking about why other schools in Virginia adopting solar panels makes it even more important for Fairfax County to do so. Before I start, I would like to thank the school board for working with solar panel experts and looking into the options for renewable energy. It means a lot to us, the students, that the people in charge of the educational system are taking the environment seriously and searching for solutions. All across Virginia, schools are installing solar panels. Already, Richmond City Public Schools, Abomaro County Public Schools, Augusta County Public Schools, Middlesex County Public Schools and Arlington County Public Schools have adopted solar or plans for solar. Setting the example for future agreements, Arlington received a very favorable contract that is cheaper than the earlier price paid for utilities. Over a twenty-five-year contract, Arlington Public Schools is projected to save between two point five and four million dollars. With no price increases over the contract period, a power purchase agreement is a very practical method to attain solar panels on public schools. With the current option and its benefits in mind, FCPS needs to act quickly. There are limits on the amount of solar that can be installed in Dominion Energy's Virginia Territory using power purchase agreements. The limit could be easily reached in 2019 and FCPS would lose its chance to install solar panels in a feasible and cost-efficient manner. This is why it is crucial that we gain your support in this movement. FCPS is a leader in education and we should be a leader in the environment too. Thank you.
Mewa Johnston, Emma Layton and Susan Garahan.
Good evening, my name is Mewa Johnston and I am a senior at James Madison High School. I'm here to speak to you today about the Solar on the Schools Initiative in Fairfax County and I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you. There's a gross misconception that large change requires large actions. That statement couldn't be farther from the truth. Small actions occurring simultaneously and globally can produce a domino effect impacting local areas and slowly expanding its influence to the rest of the world. That domino effect is occurring as we speak. Costa Rica has successfully utilized only renewable energy sources for three hundred days. The European Union, China, India, Canada and Japan were among one hundred seventy-five parties that signed and ratified the Paris Climate Agreement and pledged to minimize greenhouse gas emissions. The domino effect has even reached the United States as well. Counties all over the country are transitioning to solar energy to power their schools and public facilities. This wave has reached Virginia too. Richmond, Augusta, Middlesex and Arlington have joined the movement in support of renewable energy and it is time we joined it as well. Utilizing solar panels in our schools is not a charity contribution. It is a deal with our planet that not only preserves this earth for future generations, but also holds valuable educational benefits for our students. The presence of solar panels in schools encourages hands-on activities that teach data analysis, graphing and other research-based skills. A 2015 study by the University of Chicago showed that these hands-on projects lead to higher scores in STEM-related subjects. The National American Association for Environmental Education also reported that high school students' environment-based education programs develop critical thinking skills, some even exceeding those of college students. Furthermore, it improves reading comprehension and problem-solving skills, the exact skill set needed in a time of constant innovation. I've been in this school system since second grade and if there's anything I know about FCPS, it is that we pride ourselves in academic excellence. This country offer, this county offers a high-level education for people of all backgrounds and every year we successfully send graduates to the top universities in the country. The Solar on the Schools Initiative is not only a moral duty, but is also a way for us to improve the great academic system we already have. It is also, it will also set an example to students to not be satisfied with the present and to continually search for new methods of innovation and growth. So what are we afraid of? Solar is our future. Thank you.
Emma Layton.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Emma Layton and I'm a senior at Woodson High School. Tonight, I address the importance of solar energy as a representative of Solar on the Schools, but I also speak it as a student with an astronomy lesson that I learned in one of my classes this year. The cosmic calendar is a way of relating geologic time, a map of the universe's expansive history on a twelve-month scale. January first marks the Big Bang. Billions of years later, this moment here marks midnight of December the thirty-first. On the cosmic calendar, humanity is very, very small and very, very recent. The birth of civilization was only forty seconds ago and one point two seconds ago, Columbus stumbled on North America and decided to call it home. Our astronomical impact on the planet in the past two hundred years, the industrialization, the pollution, the induction of climate change and its consequences, has happened in cosmic milliseconds. So what does that tell us? It tells us that the Earth, which has existed for billions and billions of years, is being ruined really, really quickly by the climate change we cause. It tells us that our perception of time is limited because what is decades or lifetimes to us is barely the blink of an eye in the grand scheme of time. It tells us that we must be the ones to act and now because in seconds, the Earth will pass the point of no return and not just some vague future, but we as well will venture into the amalgamation of the chapters of Dante's Inferno that await. We have a lot of reasons to go solar. My peers tonight have shared a number of them with you. As Helen, Mewa and Ira said, in doing so, we keep the environmental and educational pace with other Virginia counties. Like Catherine mentioned, we bolster ourselves economically by utilizing the tax credit saved by a PPA. And as Wendy said, by saving the planet, we fulfill our moral obligation as citizens by cultivating a beautiful, healthy environment for the future to inherit. FCPS has been doing a fantastic job already. Our Energy Star certification and recent unanimous commitment to mitigating climate change attest to that. But we stand at a pivotal moment in the cosmos. We, the people in this room, are unique. We're either the last generation in geologic time to see the Earth's former beauty or we're the people that preserved it, that created a future built to last. We need concrete plans to integrate solar outlined in our CIP because we need to be doing more and we need to be doing it now. Our actions today will dictate the prosperity of tomorrow and the Earth and the cosmic years to come is entirely ours to shape. Thank you.
Susan Garahan, followed by Andy Burke and Matthew Dunn.
Good evening. My name is Susan Garahan and my daughter is a sophomore at McLean High School. And because of the comments that I'm going to share, I think it's noteworthy that I also went to Fairfax County Public Schools and graduated from Langley High School quite a long time ago. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and thank you for all of your service and dedication to our schools and our kids. I'm here tonight to highlight the overcrowding at McLean High School and the fact that there are no, or that I see no concrete proposals in the draft 2020 to 2024 CIP. The current enrollment at McLean is two thousand two hundred fifty-five students. The program capacity is one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three. This equates to fourteen percent over capacity. The forecast in the CIP shows that in the last two years of this five-year plan, McLean will be the most overcrowded high school in the county at twenty-six to twenty-seven percent. I believe we can all have confidence in this forecast because if we look at what's happening at our feeder middle school Longfellow, we can see that the class sizes for class of twenty-three and twenty-four are tracking to be at least as big as McLean's freshman class, which is five hundred and ninety students. I'm pretty confident that's a record and when, I'm also confident that if we've come close before, it was a blip, but I, as I said, I think we can be confident that this is not a blip. Development along the Silver Line in McLean and Tysons is one probable cause and I know there's a lot of debate about whether that kind of housing is attracting the kinds of people that have kids in our schools. And I just want to highlight that there is an attendance island there that's near West Park, Greensboro Road, Tyco Road. Two buses pick up only those kids to go to McLean High School. And with the new buildings opening, I think that that could really be an aggravator to our enrollment in that part of the county. An October article in our student magazine, The Highlander, described the overcrowding and I attached it to my written comments and it talked about overcrowded buses, hallway intersections in the school where the flow comes to a dead stop when classes are changing, more trailers and teachers without dedicated classrooms. And you know more than I do about these and other ramifications of overcrowding. So given the current conditions and your forecast of the exacerbation of overcrowding, I was startled that I didn't see anything concrete in the plan. For example, McLean's boundary is adjacent to Langley High School. Langley's renovation is complete. In the plan, it suggests there's a notable capacity, under-capacity situation there and yet I didn't see McLean-Langley boundary adjustment on the study list on page forty-six and that really surprised me. I also want to highlight that McLean is now the smallest high school in the county. And so what I want to ask is that you please, in the final report, put some concrete proposals in. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Burke, followed by Matthew Dunn and Kenyatta Williams.
Hello, my name is Andrew Burke. I'm here tonight to read the statement of my neighbor Wayne Ternaz who had to be out of town for business. Good evening, my name is Wayne Ternaz. I'm a homeowner in the Mount Vernon District of Fairfax County and I'm the father of four children in Fairfax County Public Schools, all of whom will attend West Potomac High School. I'm an active-duty member of the United States Marine Corps and have twenty-six years of service to include combat tours in both Iraq and Afghanistan. I'm a member of the Design and Construction Committee for the proposed capacity enhancement at West Potomac High School. As you know, West Potomac is already operating at several hundred students above its design capacity and Fairfax County Public Schools is proposing to expand West Potomac to a maximum capacity of three thousand students. To accommodate the current overage and expand the capacity to three thousand, Fairfax County Public Schools has proposed a meager fifteen million dollar budget. Based on my military experience and security expertise, the proposed fifteen million dollar budget for the capacity enhancement is plainly insufficient to resolve the significant security issues that exist at West Potomac. I understand that West Potomac is the only open campus and open campus high school in Fairfax County. Whatever the intentions of the original design, it is plainly inappropriate and dangerous in an era of rampant school shootings. The gaps in safety and security that already exist and will continue to exist under the, under the proposed budget are as follows. Lack of capacity in the cafeteria, lack of capacity in the hallways and the high school not having appropriate level of school resource officers to respond to crisis should it occur. The cafeteria is currently at capacity and cannot accommodate the existing number of students, let alone the planned three thousand student capacity. If you were to visit the school during the lunch period, you'll find that often students are eating outside on the grass and on the benches, there's just not enough room in the cafeteria to eat. The capacity enhancement will not provide funding to enlarge the cafeteria to accommodate the current student body or the three thousand student capacity. If the cafeteria is not enlarged, the chances of students being at risk should an incident occur will only increase as the student population grows. The proposed fifteen million dollar, fifteen million dollar budget is not enough to ensure the safety and security of our children. The hallways are currently at capacity and cannot accommodate the existing number of students, let alone the planned three thousand student capacity. Currently, West Potomac exceeds the six-minute time allotted by the state of Virginia to transition between the classes. The time it takes for students to transition between classes is currently eight minutes. The proposed budget is insufficient to enable the contractor and architect to connect and enclose the three buildings. Currently, most students opt not to use the hallways and they choose to go outside of the buildings and they're still often tardy to classes. If the hallways are not widened with the new capacity enhancement, the chances of students being at risk should an incident occur will only increase as the student population grows. And lastly, the number of armed school resources, armed school resource officers at West Potomac is inadequate. The way in which the county decides the appropriate number of school resource officers is outdated and leaves our children at significant risk should an incident occur. West Potomac currently has one school resource officer, but he also, thanks, sorry. I'll let him know I didn't finish.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Dunn and today I'm speaking exclusively in my personal capacity as the father of three children in FCPS, all of whom are attending or will attend West Potomac High School. Please refer to my written statement for my full remarks. West Potomac is a fantastic high school and I would not send my kids anywhere else, but right now it needs your help. And it's not a Mount Vernon District issue. This is a Fairfax County issue because if you look, if you talk about diversity and equity, you have to look at West Potomac, which is Fairfax County in a nutshell. Then you look at CIP page sixty-three, which shows that it's the most over-capacity high school in the county by far. Right now, it is four hundred students over capacity, which is why there are eighteen trailers at West Potomac. Within three years, it will be seven hundred students over capacity and as enrollment increases, so will the number of trailers. FCPS is proposing to expand its capacity from the current twenty-two thirty-one to three thousand students, but there are two problems. First, if you look at page forty-five of the. are eating outside on the grass, and on the benches, there's just not enough room in the cafeteria to eat. The capacity enhancement will not provide funding to enlarge the cafeteria to accommodate the current student body or the 3,000-student capacity. If the cafeteria is not enlarged, the chances of students being at risk should an incident occur will only increase as the student population grows. The proposed $15 million, $15 million budget is not enough to ensure the safety and security of our children. The hallways are currently at capacity and cannot accommodate the existing number of students, let alone the planned 3,000-student capacity. Currently, West Potomac exceeds the six-minute time allotted by the state of Virginia to transition between the classes. The time it takes for students to transition between classes is currently eight minutes. The proposed budget is insufficient to enable the contractor and architect to connect and enclose the three buildings. Currently, most students opt not to use the hallways, and they choose to go outside of the buildings, and they're still often tardy to classes. If the hallways are not widened with the new capacity enhancement, the chances of students being at risk should an incident occur will only increase as the student population grows. And lastly, the number of armed school resources, armed school resource officers at West Potomac is inadequate. The way in which the county decides the appropriate number of school resource officers is outdated and leaves our children at significant risk should an incident occur. West Potomac currently has one school resource officer, but he also, thanks, sorry. I'll let him know I didn't finish.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Dunn, and today I'm speaking exclusively in my personal capacity as the father of three children in FCPS, all of whom are attending or will attend West Potomac High School. Please refer to my written statement for my full remarks. West Potomac is a fantastic high school, and I would not send my kids anywhere else. But right now, it needs your help. And it's not a Mount Vernon District issue. This is a Fairfax County issue, because if you look, if you talk about diversity and equity, you have to look at West Potomac, which is Fairfax County in a nutshell. Then you look at CIP, page 63, which shows that it's the most overcapacity high school in the county by far. Right now, it is 400 students overcapacity, which is why there are 18 trailers at West Potomac. Within three years, it will be 700 students overcapacity, and as enrollment increases, so will the number of trailers. FCPS is proposing to expand its capacity from the current 2231 to 3,000 students, but there are two problems. First, if you look at page 45 of the CIP, it won't be completed until FY 2023 at the earliest. Second, the proposed budget is $15 million, which is simply not realistic to accomplish the desired objectives, let alone to address the critical security issues that Mr. Taranaz and Mr. Burke discussed. So I respectfully request, realistically, that FCPS and the school board double, triple, or even quadruple the budget to ensure that the critical security issues and needs of the school are met. The bad news is there are no easy or cheap solutions here. First, every square inch is already spoken for by buildings, parking lots, and athletic facilities. It's not like schools in western Fairfax where there's lots of green space that you could build on. There is no open space for a new building. Some have suggested building on a new turf field that was funded by West Potomac parents just a couple of years ago for a cost of $100,000. That is unacceptable. West Potomac has few athletic facilities as it is, and its athletic teams are oversubscribed with a surplus of students competing for few available spots. Second, eminent domain is not an option because of the historic nature of the surrounding properties. Third, boundary adjustments are not a viable option because nearby high schools, Mount Vernon, Hayfield, and Edison, do not have sufficient capacity today and definitely will not under CIP projections by FY 2023. There simply are not enough seats at the surrounding schools, even Mount Vernon, which is 85%. Fourth, relocating a special program for students with disabilities from a fourth building on the campus would make a small building available, but the architect doing this project for FCPS has confirmed that there is not enough room in that fourth building to accommodate the current surplus, let alone the 700 students over. Plus, it would increase transit time from, as my colleague mentioned, eight minutes to 10 minutes. That's too much transit time, taking away time from learning. So here's what we need to do. The only viable solution appears to be the plan that was originally conceived by FCPS. It's called the Two Towers Plan. There are three buildings. You construct two towers connecting the three buildings. It's fairly simple. Then instead of having three buildings and students outside all day, wandering between classes and the 18 trailers, you actually have a safe, enclosed environment that will keep our school and our students safe. That would have to be accompanied by a larger cafeteria and an above-ground or underground parking deck to meet requirements for parking spaces. So I close, please, more money, more safety and security is what we ask and a demand for our children, your students.
Mr. Dunn, thank you. Kenyatta Williams, followed by Jennifer Pradas and Liz Murphy.
Good evening. My name is Kenyatta Williams. I have lived in Fairfax County for about 21 years. I am a homeowner and the parent of two children in the Fairfax County Public Schools who will attend West Potomac High School. I am a member of the Design and Construction Committee for the proposed capacity enhancement at West Potomac High School. I was alarmed to hear of the school's overcrowding and security issues, with almost 2,600 students with a school capacity of only 2,231, and plans to grow the student body every year to 3,000. 18 trailers for a school not under construction, and traveling teachers who have to cart their belongings around each period because they don't have a permanent classroom. For these reasons alone, this situation has to be concerning to everyone here. Clearly, the direction of the school planned in the '70s is doing, is doing our students no justice in the 2000s. The overcrowding and the open-campus design of West Potomac creates unnecessary and unacceptable safety and security risks for students. We've heard that it's very hard to maneuver between classes and the hallways with the number of folks at school. As a result, students often have to leave one building to attend classes in any of, any of the other two buildings on the campus, along with having classes in a trailer outside of the school building. We've also heard the cafeteria isn't big enough to host students during the lunch periods, even in rotating shifts, forcing some students to eat lunch outside, even in colder weather. Students going outside for lunch or to get, or to get between classes puts the students at risk for all outside threats and for them to freely live, leave campus without permission. I'm not sure if the number of safety resource officers is enough for the number of people we are dealing with on campus on a daily basis, although West Potomac does have an additional security assistant. And the students aren't the only ones moving around in the hallways. Some teachers are doing the same. How is that efficient for the teacher to possibly get to the classroom at the same time as the students and having to set up first? West Potomac has limited room for growth because it is surrounded by homes. We've heard that it is, it will be impossible to meet the parking requirements for 3,000 students because an underground or above-ground parking deck is outside the scope of the budget. We've also heard that the limited budget may require FCPS to build on a new athletic field that was funded by West Potomac parents. This is unacceptable. West Potomac students should not lose new, their new athletic field because FCPS won't provide sufficient funding. I want what any Fairfax County Public School parent wants for their children, and that's to have a safe and secure environment in which my children can receive the best learning experience possible. I ask you to reconsider and increase the proposed $15 million budget so West Potomac's overcrowding and security issues can be properly addressed while providing adequate parking and preserving all existing athletic fields. Thank you.
Jennifer Pradas, followed by Liz Murphy and Julia Hakim.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Pradas, and my three children went through Fairfax County Schools. I'm a teacher for Fairfax County School, but I'm also the site leader for the invasive management area program at Lake Lane, which is the park that's slated to be destroyed to create a new school. The park is located in the densest area of Oakton, is surrounded by townhomes and condos where people do not have backyards where their children can play, so the park is their backyard. The park is a respite from the noise, the air pollution, and the traffic of 66, which with the construction is getting worse, and Lake Lane itself. When the area was first designated to be a school back in the 1970s, the area was surrounded by open space. But now it's one of the few remaining parks in Oakton and the only one with open fields and a dog park. The park is constantly in use by kids running around, soccer players, kite flyers, dog walkers. It's the glue of the community. It makes that area. Since volunteering to become a site leader last winter, no one told us this was planned, myself and other volunteers have put in over 1,000 hours clearing invasive plants. The Girl Scouts came, and we created a pollinator garden. And we need this space. I grew up in New York City, and most people think of New York and think tall buildings. I think parks, because New York City, 14% of New York is parks. Manhattan has many small parks, all taking up prime real estate. And years ago, when Bloomberg was mayor and told us urban developer, hey, we're going to be getting an influx of immigrants coming in, we need more housing, she didn't say, okay, we're going to raise our parks. She said, she actually added more small parks and cleaned up the parks that were already existing. She understood that parks create a community and add value to the area. Studies have shown their properties near parks are valued at 10% higher than areas not guarding parks, and the volumes of parks, homes near schools often go down. I'm telling you this because the impression I received from talking to a member of the school, of the Board of Supervisors, is that instead of seeing the park as an essential economic and social asset to the community, as the planners in New York City would, the Board sees it merely as a piece of property they own, and they feel that they need to build a school, something which, I know I don't have all the information, but the CIP does not show we need, and since they own this land, why spend money on buying new land, which could be bought by developers instead? I'm also the site leader at Board Street Park and have spent almost every Saturday for five years volunteering there, not only pulling invasive plants, but educating thousands of students that have come to volunteer about their environment. And I hope that they will understand the true value of open space. If they're ever in the same situation as the Board is today, they will know that what may seem in the short run to be the most efficient and cost-effective really isn't. They will think ahead and save the parks and open space that are so rapidly disappearing. And as all those students so eloquently said, you know, you guys have this chance to actually do us right. We've been busy destroying open space, and now we should go ahead and try to save it and do what we can. So that's why I'm here. So thank you for talking. I know you have a really difficult job, but thank you.
Liz Murphy, followed by Julia Hakim and Keith Fox.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Braybrand. I'm the parent of two FCPS graduates and a godson graduating with a class of 2019. I'm here tonight to speak of inequities demonstrated in the CIP that are not being adequately addressed by the school board and SCPS staff. One of the guiding principles of the CIP is to keep students within the zoned pyramid from grades K through 12. In fact, almost 20,000 of SCPS's students are transfer students out of their own pyramid, contributing to inequities apparent throughout the CIP document. The end result of the inequity is evident in the CIP, along with the absence of a large-scale boundary study over the past 14 years to address countywide demographic changes, has left the Office of Facilities Planning Services with student overcrowding in some region schools, empty seats in other region schools, and school board members reluctant to tackle the challenge except through promotion of smaller-scale boundary adjustments that may have parochial benefits to certain communities. Adding capacity and building more schools in both, is both financially and unrealistic and inequitable, when options such as adjusting boundaries to fill seats at schools with empty seats is an option. While students in crowded high schools may complain about sitting in learning trailers, students in high schools with empty seats are facing reduced curriculum opportunities, fewer athletic and extracurricular opportunities as well. Currently, the Equity Office Team does not list the Office of Facilities Planning Services as a team member. Equitable decisions cannot be made without this important office's input. Please formally elevate the Office of Facilities Planning Services to the Equity Office Team. Also, add the CIP document to the list of programs and policies under review by the Equity Office. To my all, to my knowledge, there are 12 programs under Equity Review, including all advanced academic programs. These 12 programs have unique and conflicting facility needs that are expected to be solved by Facilities Planning Services. Formally including this office as an Equity Office Team member and including them as a partner in reviewing all of these programs will allow for more accurate capacity planning within our schools, which is the chief charge of the Facilities Planning Committee, excuse me, Services. In my opinion, it will also place the responsibility for initiating and approving FCPS staff boundary-drawn recommendations back where it belongs, and that is with the school board. Many other programs are currently spread unevenly throughout FCPS schools and completely absent from some schools. I refer to the placement of school base Level 4 instruction, AAP centers, and immersion programs at the elementary and middle, middle school levels. And at the high school level, curriculum choices of AB, IP, language and elective choices, and athletic opportunities are also unevenly promoted. Please consider these proposals. Thank you.
Julia Hakim, followed by Keith Fox and Robert Walter.
Hello, my name is Julia Hakim. I am a freshman at George Mason University and a graduate of James Madison High School. I am speaking for the Solar for Schools Initiative, an initiative started three years ago by three students, one of which is here today, urging our school system, Fairfax County Public Schools, to install solar panels. First and foremost, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Braybrand and FCPS for consistently advocating for clean energy in our futures. Secondly, I would like to tell you all why FCPS going solar is so important to me. Why am I speaking up? My dad taught me the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Why do I care? My mom taught me compassion, and my sister taught me how to look closer at nature and appreciate how beautiful it is. That appreciation taught me to respect our Mother Earth and protect it, to leave no trace behind, to be a student for environmental action and speak up for those who do not have a voice. And you, as our representatives, can speak up for those who do not have a voice. Last January, you all declared that not only solar, but a commitment to energy efficiency and renewable alternatives would be a priority in the capital improvement program. After a moment like this, I once and for all truly believed that the squeaky wheel gets the grease, that by working together, we can speak up for the environment and make a difference. And we will continue to do just that. This past Saturday, we spoke to the Fairfax County General Assembly delegation, urging them to remove barriers to solar by passing in its entirety the Solar Freedom Bill, patroned by Delegate Keem and Senator McClellan. Representatives of our community, actions speak louder than words. School systems in Virginia have already added solar to their energy mix: Bath, Albemarle, Middlesex, Augusta, and Arlington Public Schools. Better yet, Arlington Public Schools made an award in 2018 for a solar PPA, Power Purchase Agreement. The pricing was better than what the school system was currently paying the utility, and now, the contract is fixed for 25 years with no price increases. What are we waiting for? As one of the leading counties in the nation, there is no longer a reason to delay in the implementation of solar on FCPS schools in 2019. Listen closely. Do you hear the albatross's last breath? The canary is singing, the tires are squeaking, and so are we. The time to act on climate is not 10 or 20 years from now. The time is now. The time is now to commit to installing solar on our schools, real solar, that powers the schools, lowers costs, provides educational tools, and significantly reduces the school's carbon footprint. Clean energy is the future, and we are the future. Let the future be ours. Thank you.
Keith Fox, followed by Robert Walter and Meg Mall.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking time tonight, away from your families and sitting here with us. My name is Keith Fox. I want to reintroduce myself. I live in Springfield, Virginia. I have two daughters who graduated from Lee High School, one's at VCU in the nursing program, the other one's at UVA in the nursing program. And I have a daughter at Saratoga Elementary School. Before I start, I'd like to personally thank some school board members: Karen Keys-Gamara, Ryan McQuain, Tamara Kofax, thank you very much, Karen Corbett Sanders, nice to see you in the chairwoman's seat right now, and basically for living and breathing, and Dr. Braybrand also, for living and breathing this One Fairfax policy that I'm hearing about, and Dahlia also, pow check. For those who are not familiar with the One Fairfax Initiative, it's a social and racial equity policy that commits the county and schools to consider equity when making decisions or developing and delivering programs or services countywide. I think it's wise. I'm glad the Board of Supervisors also signed on to this. Next, I'd like to thank the individuals who prepared this 2020, 2024 Capital Improvement Program with some improved projections and methodology. I know that was a lot of work. Now, onto my comments. I'm totally, I'm totally in support of spending money for maintenance. I can spend my tax money for that. I, I, a little hesitant about spending my tax money to expand certain high schools, while other high schools that are just a few neighborhoods away have room to spare. What kind of sense does this make? I don't know if it's the best use of our money. Let's look at these utilization disparities and try to fix that. That's part of the solution. My solution's pretty simple. I ask the board to have the courage to look at school boundaries. There's been some little boundary changes here or there. I think countywide, we really have to take a look at it. It's going to take some courage. Several of the reports developed by the school board, developed by the Facilities Management Group, mention this as an option. They usually mention it down the bottom because it's not popular, but it is a very serious option, and I think we need to consider it. Let's stop kicking the can down the road. Somehow, we're going to have to deal with this. I think the time to deal with it is right now. Let's be bold. Thank you.
Robert Walter, Meg Mall, and Jason Tucker.
Good evening. My name is Robert Walter. I'm a citizen of the Springfield District and apparently the only one representing Springfield District here tonight. And I'm here to express support for installing solar panels on all 193 schools and all the other FCPS buildings in Fairfax County. The Arlington County School Board recently entered into a solar power purchase agreement for five schools with Suntribe Solar that included a fixed price for electricity over the contract term. Their solar panel installation would have no upfront capital cost and could save the school district on operating costs and estimated $4 million over a 25-year contract. The fixed price gives the school systems the stability in managing its energy budget over the term of the contract. This type of savings, if FCPS were to enter into a similar agreement for all 193 schools in Fairfax, would result in approximately $154 million in savings, more than $6 million per year over the 25-year power purchase agreement. That is just one of the ways that this school system can become more environmentally friendly and sustainable. Building all future construction to higher energy-efficient standards will also help us reduce the amount of energy we're using in the schools. Another idea would be to replace our bus fleet with electric-powered buses. Our bus fleet is aging, and switching to electric buses can benefit Fairfax County schools, our budget, and the environment in several ways. Standard electric buses could be powered by using the same solar panel technology we would be using on the schools in Fairfax and at a fixed price, which would bring down cost savings and give us cost certainty. We could also look at replacing buses with electric buses that employ a vehicle We could also look at replacing buses with electric buses that employ a vehicle-to-grid technology with solar panels on the roof of the bus. These panels allow the buses to charge themselves and, when not in use, to be plugged into the grid to generate power to use elsewhere in the system. The huge bus parking lot on I-66 near Ox Road could be generating electricity on weekends, on breaks, and all summer when buses are not being used. I urge this Board to take the fiscally responsible and environmentally beneficial step in putting solar power on our schools and electric buses on our streets. Thank you.
Meg Mall, followed by Jason Tucker and Kathy Hosek.
Good evening. My name is Meg Mall. I'm the parent of, I'm a parent of two elementary students at CrossFit Elementary, and I am representing Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions, or FACS. We are a nonpartisan interfaith organization of more than 70 congregations in Northern Virginia. We believe that climate change is an urgent moral challenge of our time. We know that it is our youth that will be most impacted by the negative consequences of climate change. Conversely, it is our youth that will lead the way, as evidenced by the fantastic students that spoke earlier this evening. Yet we must act now and with urgency. The Fairfax County School Board's Resolution on Climate Change Action, approved this past October, recognizes the seriousness of climate change. So does FCPS's commitment to environmental sustainability in the Capital Improvement Plan and its award-winning energy efficiency programs. FACS commends the county for its tremendous strides in achieving energy efficiency and other sustainability initiatives. With energy efficiency efforts underway and highly successful for several years now, the county is now poised to incorporate a strong focus on renewable energy. The CIP guiding principles state that the county will prioritize systems and practices that maximize energy efficiency and provide for the cost-effective transition to clean and renewable energy alternatives to fossil fuels. As the CIP acknowledges, power purchase agreements, historically not economically competitive, are now proving to save school districts across the nation millions of dollars. Since PPAs by nature don't require capital investment, it may seem odd to discuss them during a public hearing for the Capital Improvement Plan. However, building renewable energy into the plans for renovation, expansion, and new construction is an ideal time to, to ensure the appropriate specifications and structural requirements are baked into the design, and PPAs are a cost-effective means of funding these projects. It has been proven in pilots across the country. FACS challenges the FCPS Board and staff to pilot a solar project at one or more of the schools identified in the CIP for renovation or capacity enhancements. The pilot should be rapidly scaled, including an assessment of viability for solar at all schools that have been newly renovated and/or are particularly well-suited for solar. Fairfax County can learn from the jurisdictions that have successfully adopted solar, and by effectively operationalizing a strong plan, as with its energy efficiency programs, can quickly become a leader in renewable energy. Last year, FACS encouraged the inclusion of sustainability language into the CIP. Let's make this year the year Fairfax County commits to a tangible renewable energy project. Further, FACS challenges the Board to demonstrate how the strong sustainability language in the CIP will translate to capital investments in energy conservation and sustainability in the upcoming budget cycle. Thank you for your time. FACS believes that by working together, we can create strong, moral equitable climate solutions for a healthy, sustainable Fairfax County.
Jason Tucker, followed by Kathy Hosek and Lori Dodd.
Good evening. My name is Jason Tucker. I'm a longtime Fairfax resident. I went through Limbrook Key and graduated from Lee in 1989, so you know exactly how old I am, and my wife would not be happy if I told you she graduated the same year. But I am here to ask a few questions, not so much about my school, about a taxpayer and building utilization. My first question is, why are we adding an elementary-sized school addition to West Potomac High School when there are 468 seats currently available next door at Mount Vernon? That's currently 468 seats available. Even in five years, there are still slated to be 398 seats available. So you have to ask yourself, that's a, it's a 769 seats is a 34% increase in the size of West Potomac. That's got to be a record for a high school in Fairfax County as far as an addition goes, a renovation. So I understand West Potomac needs renovation, and I understand the security concerns, and I can even see adding 2, 300, 400 seats, but 769 seats, that's an entire elementary school you're plopping on top of. And it doesn't sound like they have the room, and it sounds like it's going to cost a lot of money. Boundary changes could bring about much quicker relief to West Potomac. That is the reality. But the Board has a real hesitancy and a real fear in moving people to a poorer school. It's just a simple fact, and I'm afraid that's the truth. And I'm afraid if you don't move students to Mount Vernon, that is a vote of no confidence in Mount Vernon that you send to the entire community. It's a similar problem we have over at Lee, where nobody wants to be sent to Lee, even though West Springfield, even with its addition finishing, will be 10% over capacity in a few years. So you're sending votes of no confidence in these schools if you refuse to move students to them. So to me, it almost comes off you're protecting one Fairfax, as we talk about, from the other Fairfax, and that's, that's, that's hurtful. Just in the same West Potomac pyramid, why is Bucknell Elementary School operating at 34% capacity when next door at Hyblavally is 116%? In fact, I think every school around Hyblavally has space. Springfield Estates just finished renovation two years ago. Then last year, it was decided we'll move half of the AAP students to Bush Hill. Bush Hill is undergoing a renovation currently. When all is said and done, the two schools will both be operating under 70% capacity, according to this, in five years, with a total of 642 seats available between the two. I'm not sure why we're expanding, why we expanded both of them. I'm just not sure where we're going there as a taxpayer. Last year, it was decided we'd move some students from Jackson to Thoreau. We have flip-flopped the overcrowding problem in just two years. So next year, Thoreau will be at 112% capacity, and Jackson will be at 81% capacity. These decisions aren't making sense, and we keep doing them. And I have a feeling that if you look at both the Springfield Estates and Bush Hill and the Thoreau-Jackson, one of the common factors is AAP, okay? That is complicating the planning staff's job severely because that program has grown and bloated severely. That's all I have to say. I just, you know, is the AAP problem causing too much trouble?
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
And we spend taxpayer money widely.
Good evening, again. My name is Kathy Hosek, and I'm here to speak in favor of a countywide boundary adjustment. I've been following the boundary issues since the CIP of 2014, along with a lot of you guys, and I'm happy that we're finally inching closer to everyone agreeing that it is time for a full-on boundary adjustment. I would like the number-one priority when addressing the boundaries of a school to be the student's proximity to the school. I understand that there are schools, they're not necessarily in the ideal locations to best serve our enrollment needs, but we can certainly look to eliminate attendance islands and work to eliminate split feeders. FCPS is a public school system that is set to serve the public, all of it where they live. We don't need to go to them, they shouldn't have to move around, we should meet them in their neighborhoods. We should educate that the students where they live, it's not the fault of the School Board that housing is not always as diverse as we would like. Many families choose a neighborhood based on the reputation of a local school. If a school has a high poverty rate, I suggest that we meet those communities where they are. We can do this by setting up more community schools, such as Walt Whitman and Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School, and we can bring in the supports that these specific schools need directly to them, programs like Grand Involve, which I'm working with, and partnering with community partners for starters. For example, at Mount Vernon Woods, I helped to start an after-school program for knitting, and we had 21 students show up, four boys. And now we have to move to the cafeteria because it's going to grow even more. So the need for quality after-school programming in the Title I schools is tremendous. The need for the community's support in the Title I schools is also tremendous. I think if we can build and support the community bonds within the existing communities, I believe everyone will benefit. The school should be the center of the community, not just for school day, but throughout the whole thing. Region 3 is a diverse, economically-challenged area, as most of the people here are from Region 3. Many of our schools are Title I. One mentioned solution for the boundaries is to deal with socioeconomic resegregation. I hesitate to support this idea as the target numbering for the tipping point is 40% for free and reduced meals, and almost the entire Mount Vernon Pyramid is significantly higher than that in every elementary school. So you can't like, you can't spread it around, it's, there's too much. So that brings me to my next point. I see that on page 158 of the CIP, we're talking about Get to Green and how we've improved communication through Twitter. I think if we promote the awesome things that are happening in Mount Vernon, Lee, schools that get no press or bad press, we can help eliminate that, and I think it should be done for all our schools. And sadly, the people in those schools are working so hard, they don't have time to stop and tweet. Like, they need support. I don't know how the School Board can help them, but that would be fabulous. And like Great Schools does a disservice. I had a friend in from Florida, and she said, "Oh yeah, I looked at Great Schools," and it gave this school. I said, "Mm-mm, you can't look at that. Mount Vernon Woods is a 2? There's no way that school is a 2. That school is like an 8, 9, easy." So, and I highly recommend you go to FPAC with these people back here because it's really informative, but thank you.
Lori Dodd, followed by Mike Sandler.
Good evening. My name is Lori Dodd. I am a 23-year resident of Reston and a parent of two Fairfax County graduates, one from Herndon High School, one from TJ, and I'm very proud to have been so associated with an excellent school system like we have in Fairfax County. I would applaud what you all have done recently to, to move forward with solar energy on some of our school rooftops, and I would like to encourage you to move even stronger in that direction as we go forward into our future. Bold action is called for. I am a homeowner who, in the last year, installed solar panels on my home, so I have seen how, what an impact it has on our electric bills, how we can have clean energy, renewable energy, and there are financing options out there for solar. And I would encourage Fairfax County schools to take a creative, innovative look at ways that it could be financed to improve our solar exposure. I agree with others who have said that Fairfax County should have a goal of having solar panels on every rooftop, on every Fairfax County school property, because solar energy is the way we're going to have a cleaner energy future. I support the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions in their request that the CIP itself have a goal of sustainability and that it become a priority for Fairfax County schools. In fact, it should be a priority through every part, every aspect of Fairfax County because we have to look at the future. We have to mitigate the, the climate change problems that we have seen, we have to clean up our act, and I would encourage Fairfax County public schools to not only continue in this direction, but to, to make bold steps, to do it bigger, cleaner, more sustainable for our future. Thank you.
Mike Sandler.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mike Sandler. I'm a resident of Springfield. I have two sons at Orange Hunt Elementary School, so I'm also constituent for FCPS. This is my first time at this meeting and in this group, I guess, and so, but I, but I am very familiar with what I call the Three Minutes of Glory. I was on my city planning commission in California for two years, so I was on your side of the table and, and listening to the public. And I'd like to encourage all the young people here to stay involved, go to some city council meetings, and get used to public speaking, and have opinions because it's going to be your world soon, so keep it up. I feel very strongly about climate change. I've been an advocate around that issue for many years. I'm glad that the Faith Alliance on Climate Solutions has been pushing this forward, and I found out about this meeting from them. And regarding climate change, the problems, you could go on and on, but the good news is solutions exist. I drove here in a Chevy Volt, and that was electric-powered, and so I'm hoping you can also increase the vehicle fleet and electrify. And electric school buses are great, but also maybe administrator vehicles. There's stuff on the market now that, that's really good. There's health benefits from electric, electric school buses, as Robert Walter mentioned, and the solar approach with PPAs, the power purchase agreements, is great. Also, I found out about something recently called VEPGA, V-E-P-G-A, and that's, a lot of local governments are involved in that, and I don't know if you guys are involved in that group, that it, it's a contract for government entities with Dominion, and I heard it's going to be renewing soon, and maybe there's a way to add a renewable portfolio standard or renewable standard in the VEPGA contract. Maybe also there's a way to expand it beyond Dominion because right now we have a monopoly utility in Virginia, but I don't know if that's going to last forever. We want to be looking toward the future, and we want to be looking toward utilities that can provide the type of renewable energy that we're going to need for, for a livable planet. And if Dominion's not able to do that, you guys need to have, you know, options. You guys are energy consumers, and you should be able to find a provider that can provide the type of electricity that you need and that the kids deserve. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. And thank you again to all of the citizens, especially our students who have addressed the Board this evening. The Board will take action on the CIP at our January 24 regular meeting, and we will be discussing it at a work session this coming Monday. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.